All right, welcome everybody to the town board work session Wednesday, September 4th, 2018. First on the agenda is Chapala Crossing, the request for a cash bond agreement extension. So you guys want us to come up for it?
The road looks great, Dave.
Yeah, thank you for your patience. This was a long day.
Although I have a question.
Yes, of course.
It looks great. The question is, I noticed the lines, the striping looks great, but I noticed the don't block the box things aren't there anymore.
That is not a DOT approved stripe.
Okay, can we see if they can, it made a big difference.
We can ask, but right now my relationship with the DOT is about as good as the town's relationship with the DOT, so it's not that great.
You say that and yet I got you the extension.
Yeah, I know, but they don't like us right now.
Excuse me. Yeah, you are not on the Christmas card, I had to be honest with you.
No, no.
We could definitely ask.
So we can certainly ask.
Because it made a big difference for, and I've had a lot of people calling me saying, why isn't it there?
It did, so the one by Cal Lane obviously was left, but.
I saw the one by Cal Lane was black.
Yeah, because it's not being paved, so.
But, yeah.
We, you know, we can ask.
We could definitely join in the request because the fact is.
Yeah, it's an easy thing to do.
It made a big difference.
It's an easy thing to do and it did make a big difference.
I agree.
I mean.
And they're not supposed to block the plates, block anywhere.
And just to be clear, Sabrina and Bob had asked us to ask that, you know, before we did the paving, you know, months and months and months ago. But we had to wait till we were, you know, ready to do it to ask the DOT, but right now I'm, it's a little. We'll make the ask, I'll have our consultant make the request.
Okay, we can join in the request.
Thank you, Mike.
Uh, no, probably Peter.
Okay, just thinking.
Can we join, can we join in the request?
Yeah, if you could just, yeah, if you see email or if I have to do.
Join request, sure. Because the town has definitely, it definitely helped from the residents' point of view.
I think it did too.
I understand construction is construction, but the fact is, it made a big difference.
And we can even get Chief Carroll maybe.
Oh, absolutely, sure, you know, say something.
Yeah.
As long as it gets circulated, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's a downside, I don't see a downside.
There is no, well, I guess for them, it's a maintenance thing and restriping cost or whatever, I'm just assuming.
Well, you would say no.
Yeah, all that, right. But it's an easy fix.
It's, that's an easy fix.
I just want to make an initial point, while the striping, maybe they would just allow signs that say, don't block the, you know, don't block intersections, don't block drive, just anything.
What if the town. Striping's better, nobody really is reading it.
What if the town agrees, it's a course that I made, is what if the town agrees to restripe it every, you know, when it needs to be.
Well, we'll run it by them.
On their road.
I think they should say yes, only because of, you know, there's several intersections there.
Yeah.
Makes sense from a safety perspective.
It helps.
It did help.
For the residents, it helps.
So the first item on the agenda for Chapala Crossing is about the cash bond agreement. You may recall at our last work session, we discussed that SG is required to do certain improvements down at the Sawmill River Parkway, the train tracks in that area. And that that DOT permit is still being processed, and that was a joint town board applicant SG permit to DOT, it's not being processed yet. They were, we're supposed to get it done by August 31st, the work obviously can't occur. They've asked for an extension until August 31st, 2020. There's a resolution before the board last time. The board was generally in favor of granting, but the question before the board under discussion was, what should that be hinged to? Should it be that it has to be done in the event it occurs before August 31st, prior to the issuance of the building permit? Or prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy? The applicant had asked that the trigger be prior to the issuance of a CO. The building and planning department asked that the trigger be before the issuance of the building permit. And then Jill had a communication with Sabrina about, the planning department's false on that.
Right, and they, they still prefer that it be a condition of the building permit, not the certificate of occupancy, so that there's incentive to get it done. We're not chasing an applicant within any measure of control. If something is forgotten prior to the building permit, we will have the backup of the CO to get it done. If we wait until the CO, the town has to let it go, of course. Overall, it's good practice to maintain administrative control. We have required this in the past, and we should remain consistent.
But I don't understand, they can't let anyone move in until they have a CO. So how is that? I mean, I get the timeline's different, but they still can't really sell anything until they have a CO? Because no one's gonna buy it, well, they can sell it, but nobody's, I mean.
No, they're buying, they're selling it in advance, they're just gonna move in to it.
So, doesn't that give them the incentive?
Just refresh you. The timing for us is, we are hoping that the presidential will be approved in short order, we are hoping. If that occurs, they could be looking for a building permit in the spring, which is what we're hoping. We're trying to avoid the necessity of if these improvements are not finished by the spring, that we would not have to come back and ask for relief at that point. So we're asking for those months. The concept of not allowing us to go forward before these improvements are finished, in theory, because they're tied to traffic and you don't want to add more cars if they haven't finished the traffic improvements. In theory, I'll remind you that these were not even part of our approval, but even if that was the case, without a C of O, we can't add traffic because nobody can move into the place. So there's no new traffic, there's no harm, it's just gonna avoid us from having to come back again potentially if we can go forward or our purchaser can go forward with the, you know, the start of the construction on the residential. So I honestly, I just think it's a reasonable request, so I understand what they're saying, but we renew our request for that today.
I think the town, there's been certainly hiccups and difficulties, making mistakes, but I think the town administration has been pretty reasonable in their desire and willingness to work and get things done.
Disagree.
And you disagree or agree?
No, no, I can't disagree.
Why disagree?
I would disagree, he would say it.
It's not like we say respectfully.
I can almost hear, I can almost hear Sabrina reacting to that.
So, so thank you for agreeing, probably with my cross-examination, I don't have to do, but I guess the bottom line is, as, as I have no doubt in good faith you're going to do what you need to do, I have zero doubt. If Sabrina and the town administration is, who is responsible and the experts in this field say that we should wait and do as they say, I find no compelling reason why we would lack better than bucket, you know, bucket system here and take a hike.
I would suggest there is one potential compelling reason. Typically, there are conditions that are attached to your approval, that are part of your environmental condition. We stepped up and agreed to do this to get DOT to do the one set, we had no obligation to do this. You have a $600,000 bond from us that's sitting there, if for some reason we don't do it, and you're our joint applicant, there's no hiding from you what we're doing. You're part of the process of getting this for us. It is a little bit different than normal, it's not like we're doing some site work. This is off-site improvements that are being done voluntarily for the good of the town, which have really nothing to do with our development.
Did you speak with Sabrina about this?
We did, we were just told you were gonna speak to Sabrina, so we just kinda let that go.
Is she here?
Well, it's not just, I mean, first it wasn't voluntary, it was voluntary, we had a gun to your head, but it was voluntary.
It wasn't part of the. No, actually, we could have waited, we would have just waited in the one set.
Yeah, hopefully it's a lifetime with the open.
But anyway, we're all gonna take, we all work together to try to make this happen.
My biggest concern, to be honest, is not that you guys are going anywhere. My biggest concern is that the first CO is probably not gonna be issued for another year and a half or something at best, right?
Right.
I don't know, the construction's.
No, 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 it's still August 31st. We're not removing the August 31 deadline. The issue is if, if we haven't completed it, let's say in April, and we're ready for building permit, we can start with the building permit. Okay, because you know you're not gonna have COs for months after that. We still have to come back to you if we don't have it finished by August 31st, we can't get beyond that date. The date still applies. It's just, can we start the residential project if we haven't completed the improvements prior to August 31st?
If you start, let's say we tied to the building permit. And you start and you do all the stuff you gotta do with DC and all that stuff, because I know it's. And then you write us a letter and basically say, well, I'm not even gonna be here, but you write a letter and basically says, listen, we started, but you know, we need another month or two months worth of work and just give us an extension of those two months, what's the big deal?
I just don't hear from you a compelling reason why we have to make this change. So, you know, I think we feel like we want to support the professional opinion of the town hall staff, who have now twice, because we did, after we met with you last time, go back and ask for clarification on their part. Would they have a willingness to reconsider? And they've stuck to this position, so I guess I, I don't hear the compelling hardship on reason or hardship on your part that would make me wanna go against the city.
It's hundreds of thousands of dollars in delaying the closing, that's what it is. Because we close with Toll Brothers when we're ready for a building permit, and we won't be ready for a building permit. So it's, it's a tremendous economic hardship, that's the only reason we're, otherwise we would be existing.
Well, can you request an extension?
Is there a way we can tie it to the building permit, but say that, because look, if you're gonna be ready, let's say in the spring, right?
We hope, right.
Okay, let's say April. By then, hopefully you've started work on the sawmill, so can we tie it somehow to, you know, that they've made diligent efforts or best efforts? And if they've started and having completed it, I don't necessarily have a problem with allowing them to start building as long as they are moving ahead and moving forward with the sawmill.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with this, and I think you misinterpreted my last question, because I didn't mean that we would not allow you to come back and make this request in the future. I think that avenue would, of course, remain open to you.
Because if you, let's say April or May, wanna get a building permit, and we have this August 31 deadline, you will have already conceivably started the work on the sawmill. I mean, it doesn't happen quickly, so they may, like, I kinda feel like maybe we can go to building permit, but as long as they've started, allow them to get the building permit, you know what I mean?
Well, I was just suggesting six months after the first building permit, at least that way they can start.
Right, yeah.
They can get their building permits.
But you could.
Because we're hearing of this very likely scenario that you will be ready to.
You know what I mean, like, I wanna support Sabrina, but I, I don't know that honestly, it's really fair to make them wait to get a building permit until all of the sawmill work is done.
But you could tie it in.
But I understand what Sabrina's saying, I wanna support our building permit, so I'm just trying to see if there's kind of a, a middle ground, where we can make sure that they're making diligent efforts, but not necessarily hold up a building permit.
The middle ground would be the issuance of the permit for the work.
Right, that's, right, issuance by the DOT, by the permanent board to proceed. Now, the question is, what about work, then, do you want the commencement of the work?
Well, not just issuing of the permit, but then commencement of the work.
Right.
I mean, the bottom line is, if we tie it to the certificate of occupancy, you guys are not gonna start any of these real improvements anytime in the near future. If we tie it to some, something that's closer in time to the actual building permits than you are, and that's, that's, we, we wouldn't start the work until it's possible.
Well, again, we are starting the process, we're not starting the process till the DEP says we're starting the process.
I understand that, but you've been pushing.
That's the issue.
So if you look at the way that's being suggested, it provides them with getting their building permits, assuming they.
Suggested by Sabrina?
By me?
No, 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 suggested by Ivy and Lisa, that the, in essence, it'd be tied to the issuance of the DOT permit and the commencement of the work, and then the building permit's good issue. It gives you that trigger that the building department is looking for. It also gives them the ability to come back, if for some reason the DOT permit hasn't been issued and there's a good basis for it, and it does look like it's gonna be issued and you have time, they can then come back and ask that it be further modified to reflect the conditions that exist.
Because there's still an August 31 deadline, and what happens if it's not done by August 31st?
They're gonna have to come back, because then.
They'll have to come back and ask again.
The DEC, so.
And what happens if we just, like, what's?
We have the cash bond agreement, if it's not done, you can take it and do the work.
Right.
Right, but again, there's nothing you can do with the cash bond, there's no permit.
No, no.
Right, you can't do either.
Right, right, right.
That's, that's a reasonable delay.
It's not a question of us doing the work, it's getting the permit, we're gonna do the work.
It's in progress, it's easy enough for you to check with the DEP.
I feel like, I'm okay with the permit, receipt of the permit from DOT and commencement of the work, and then they get their building permit.
But what's stopping you from coming back regardless, whether or not we stick with what we have now from Sabrina?
Nothing, nothing's stopping.
Who's had two, two cracks at this, two bites of this apple to say, I still think, and here's my reasoning, I still think this is what it should be. Nothing is stopping you, and I do think the town has demonstrated, and you agree, that we've been reasonable in working with you, and it behooves us all to figure out how to get it done, and you did do a terrific job, it looks great. Who's gonna be in obstructions at this point?
I think, I think the problem is that they really wanna sell it to Toll Brothers, and to then have to come back to us again, it's just another delay, and I think that's what they're.
That's detrimental to our purchase and sale agreement with them. So, you know, we've had almost 24 months of carry with them in terms of the auditorium boundaries, working with that. That has delayed this process significantly, and that has really hurt us, you know, financially to get this done. So if there's any way that we can make this happen, let's, hopefully we can, you know, if we tie it to the DOT permit issuance, that, that would, that I think would work.
It's a better chance.
Nick, can I ask in your professional, in your professional experience into that end?
Can we run that by Sabrina?
No, if we, if you wanna do it, we can, we should do it.
In your professional experience, does this seem to be within the norm? Forget this particular project, but in these types of projects, is this something that you have dealt with?
Well.
Right, exactly, my line of work is no more than that.
Yeah, right, it's a complex.
Is this such an atypical request on their part, and is from the town's position perspective, is our request generally a typical one?
Yeah, so, right, nothing, with the caveat that nothing about this is being standard normal, the underlying request is typical, right? That they have a project, they want to proceed with, they wanna get building permits into the ground sooner or later, so they can proceed with the project, there's also their financing aspect of it. So that's all typical. The building department's request tying it to the CO of a building permit, I personally think the town's protected either way, that you've got enough. Because you have the $600,000 at the end of the day. The real concern isn't whether they're gonna complete the work, the real concern is are they gonna complete it in a timely enough fashion? So if it's gotta be done by August 31st, we're triggered by when are they gonna get that permit from DOT?
And do you believe, based on what Ivy and Lisa have sort of been discussing, that satisfies, satisfies, is that satisfy you for protecting the town?
Absolutely, yes. I find that that is a compromise that serves the interest of the town just as well as the condition being proposed by the building department.
And once again, some grateful, do you agree that we work together?
Yes, we do, absolutely.
And can we agree that I'm actually in help voice?
Yes, I said, I'm going to send Felix an email on that, and so the next time he sees you, he'll be very happy.
We'll strike that. We'll strike that. Let's go black screen for a second, we, we.
And I'm going to draft a letter to the DOT tomorrow about the block the box thing.
Let's all hold hands?
So do we have to, we have to redo the resolution?
Yes, I have to revise it, yes.
Okay, terrific. That's it. Now, we'll talk about the Addendale Trail.
And also, we have another resolution on the Beeline bus, but I don't think there's any issues about that one.
We're not quite ready to, uh, to release that obligation just yet. There, there is a chance that there was another site visit, and it might be possible to do it where it's less intrusive with the homeowners. So we're just gonna explore that route, and then, and then we'll see where we go with that.
That's what, the trail?
The trail.
And the path from Addendale to 117. And the path from Addendale to 117.
Yeah, it's not the Beeline bus.
No, 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 no.
Beeline bus, he's, sorry, sorry, Beeline buses is good to go, that's, that's.
Yeah, 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 it's the Addendale Trail, we just wanna make sure that, you know, if it can't be done, it can't be done, but it appears that the possibility can be done, so we're gonna explore that.
But can this town board agree, whoever's on it, the next time that the county revisits their Beeline bus schedule, which is in what, like, three years or something? That we look at seeing if it's possible to get it relocated in there? I think that's something we kinda shouldn't lose sight of in the future, but we're not.
We have not, we've had no objection to that.
Yeah, the, the county has made.
Yeah, because it's still, to me, makes a lot of sense to put in there.
What's the word I'm looking for?
They don't wanna spend the money and the time.
No, 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 they've made offerings, it's not the right word, but it's overtures, that's the word, thank you, they've made overtures to that, that they're, that they're interested in.
Overtures.
Good, because I just don't wanna forget, to me, that makes a lot more sense than having the bus stop right on 117.
Yeah, they're really good thoughts.
So we. Totally.
Um, so I wanna just revisit it at the time when the bus schedules are looked at again.
But right now, they're not willing to do it.
Yeah, 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 okay, yeah.
Okay. All right.
So what's getting promoted tonight?
Right, so we'll have that resolution ready for the next meeting, on the cash bond agreement.
And speaking of next, you have that work session, not work session, you mean.
So it was going to be on the 10th, it's actually going to be on the 17th now, because.
We have to confirm it.
Lot quicker.
And then it also requires what?
Yeah, no, no, he just tried the prior.
Well, the cash bond, why can't we do it tonight, we can't, we can't draft the resolution tonight?
We can, I have a resolution, but we just need to revise it a little bit.
Okay, we'll do it today, the cash bond one.
Kristina, I'm gonna forward it to you, if you could just print it.
Sure. And should we bifurcate, I mean, I'm okay doing the Beeline bus one tonight.
That is, yeah, there's a separate one, you can afford it.
Super.
All set?
Yep, that's it, you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
Dave, that was eventually rendered on the performing arts for the signage.
Okay.
That's what Lisa.
You'll let me know in the morning, or send me a copy.
I thought he'd tell you.
You did?
I have, I'm making progress on the shuttle, too, by the way. I heard back from the REA attorney, so I guess today, they just gotta look at it.
Okay, great.
What's the progress?
I'm sorry.
What's the progress that you've made?
With the shuttle?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I heard back from our partner's attorney, and I've got his comments, which are very minor.
It's fine.
So we've been questioning, Felix and I have been questioning with great.
Ready for that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, food trucks, we're in a discussion. So basically, just real quick, this discussion about food trucks, nobody, just to be clear, I think everybody agreed with this, nobody is saying we shouldn't have food trucks for special events in the town. Certainly, I've been a fan of food trucks, we have it for our summer concerts, we had it for our fall festival. I think the concern is that if a truck comes, a food truck comes and plops down at the Chapala train station, or plops down in front of a Visa cafe, there's nothing to stop them from doing that right now. And other towns with the onset of food trucks, other towns have passed similar legislation, just gives a town the ability to regulate them. This was not an issue 20 years ago, the only food truck was an ice cream truck.
Has it been an issue today?
It's, it's not an issue today, yet, but if a food truck plops down in front of Chapala station every night, we cannot stop them right now. We only license ice cream truck, and the food trucks don't fall within that definition.
There's really no means to, to.
Well, that seems to be extreme.
I mean, like, in New York City, they need a permit and you need a, you get a specific spot.
Right, so at least, so it's not, it's, you know, you think about this from a zoning enforcement ability, it's really not a zoning issue because it's in the public right of way. So the police would have the ability to ticket them, because they're not, they would be stopped for an extended period of time in the public right of way, and the police would have them go around, go about.
But if it was a parking spot, though?
They would then be using it for a commercial purpose, which is permitted use of parking spot.
So then.
So what we're trying to do and regulate with this food truck law is, you know, regulating how they would use public property. Clearly, as Sabrina said, if, with a sponsored town event, you control that, you can allow them onto your property. If someone wants to have a food truck for a private event on their own property, and it's not commercial, right, you're having a birthday party, you wanna have an ice cream truck come by, you can do that, that's not affected by this law. Except as to some of the operational restrictions, as to time and the hours of operation. If a commercial use like Walgreens, for example, wants to have a food truck for some particular event, you'd wanna regulate, that's not currently permitted, it wouldn't be, I mean, we would wanna have some regulation, so this law looks at that. The law also says you can get a permit to then operate a food truck on town property, and that's the issue that's before you, is do you wanna allow food trucks on town property on a regular basis?
That's the issue before us, because that's what your draft law speaks to, so is this a change from you folks on the package?
It's based upon, I mean, what was explained to me, based upon discussions that staff and Drew from my office and Jill, the police chief, had.
So, again, for clarity, someone, so someone has a food truck, a business wants to plop down at the train station, or in front of Valley Bridges, whatever it may be. Those are public right of ways, they can't, for lack of a better term, plop down there, and they'd be ticketed theoretically.
Yeah, for not having a vendor's permit either.
So we're not worried about that, that's not happening.
Correct, that could not happen.
Because we have the ability, meaning we, law enforcement has the ability to make that stop.
Yes.
If someone wanted to roll up their truck and to get me onto the grass, they couldn't do that.
Couldn't do that either, correct.
Because it'd be impermissible.
I mean, they could if we allowed it.
Right, if we allowed, correct, certainly, certainly, right, I'm just talking about on the wind, just doing that. But what we can't control right now is if in a big lot, like a Rite Aid or Walgreens, they wanted to roll up and do that, then Walgreens would say, sure, you can do whatever you want, because that's their private.
So this is to regulate food trucks within parking lots?
Yeah, so I just want clarity, yeah, I just need some clarity on that.
I don't understand the legislative intent of this at all, and I feel like that's gonna take a lot of time on it.
So with respect to the last question on a commercial property, right, if Walgreens is, if someone is using on a regular basis, they wouldn't, it'd be a different use of the property, so it would be an outdoor use. So if a restaurant routinely brings in a food truck, or Walgreens routinely brings in a food truck, that wouldn't be permitted, because they're not using their property for its permitted use. If there's the occasional use, I mean, in connection with a promotion at Walgreens or something, I don't think your building department's gonna crack down on that. That's not really what's regulated. This law, what I understood the intent of it was to regulate the permitting of food trucks on, on public properties.
But where, where are they going, I'm so confused.
But what this law says is that, that you cannot have a food truck in the.
V-dash RP zoning district.
Yeah, the VRP zoning district, which is downtown, so we're, we're saying we can't have any food trucks downtown?
Well, because.
Unless in connection.
Unless it's in connection with a sponsored, town-sponsored event.
With a town-sponsored event or a nonprofit.
So like the church, if they wanted to do a fundraiser, they could, right.
Or they get a permit.
No.
No, you can't even get a permit.
No, only if it's in connection with the town sponsoring their for-profit event.
Because you didn't wanna have, the goal was that we wouldn't wanna be competition for brick and mortar businesses, restaurants.
But so a merchant downtown can't hire a food truck for a promotional event? Family Bridges can't get the Walters hot dog truck and park it outside and give away free hot dogs to anybody who wants to come in and buy a soup from them? I mean, that just seems.
Right, or when desires wanted to do the, like, share food truck.
This is a discussion point, if, if that's what you want to allow, but would you wanna allow it on a periodic and regular basis? For a special event, it's different than a food truck coming every Wednesday, or every Saturday morning, so the customers know it's always gonna be there every Saturday.
But that's not what this says, this wouldn't allow Barry to have Walter's terrier to have a champagne truck.
Yeah, it's a, it's a. Yeah, correct, that's precluding them, we don't wanna preclude them if they're in there.
No, we, I think the goal was initially, was that if somebody wants a food truck for a special event, even if they have to ask for permission, it's fine. But I was concerned about, when the issue came up with, with desires with the food truck, there was emails that went back and forth, I was just trying to find them right now, that basically says we have zero control over food trucks, okay? And, and that's been a discussion.
We mean, we mean the town.
The town, stopping food trucks or approving food trucks or anything.
Right.
The goal was never to outlaw food trucks, the goal was just to give the town the ability to control food trucks, not just for special events, because we probably would approve it anyway, but more so, if a food truck plops down someplace, on a, like you said, regular basis, we have no control. In other towns.
But we do.
But I would say it's not allowed, that's what I've said, so.
But we do.
Yeah, we do, but that wasn't said.
Food trucks are not allowed, they need a vendor's license and they're not allowed.
Yeah, I don't, that wasn't said back then, I have emails from Sabrina, from Tom, and from, I mean, I guess it was never, from the chief, I guess I never asked the legal. But I asked the chief, I asked the building department, I asked Tom, and then we asked Richie, and they all basically said we have no, we have no ability to regulate food trucks.
But I think the discussion was, how do you wanna regulate food trucks? Just tell us what you want to be, and then write the law to allow it.
I think we need to revisit, in my opinion, we need to revisit it, because it seems like we are regulating them as long as they're, you know, code of, you know, health, up to stuff with the health code, and they can't be parked there in perpetuity, and, because of our own laws that we have in effect now. I think it needs to be really tailored more tightly, because we're precluding businesses from having these types of events that, you know.
For example, if it's a Walters hot dog, I know there's a big Walters hot dog sales.
But I think, I love Walters hot dogs.
Whatever, maybe.
I think there's, if you have Walters hot dogs, I will go. But I think there's a difference, if a merchant wants to have an event, and we wanna approve a food truck for that, that to me is totally different than a food truck coming every day and pulling up right in front of a Visa and selling tapas.
It'd be ticketed, though, you mean?
It's like a law, this is like a law in search of a problem, we don't have this problem, like, what are we legislating, we don't even know.
Yeah, obviously, we're afraid of a monster.
But we might, I mean, look, there was a whole article about the foodie bus that just came out in Chapala in the magazine, so do we wanna allow that bus to pull up right in front of a Visa at night?
We can't. It's, it can't.
When you can park unlimited amount of time, and.
It can't, no, it can't, it can't.
But it is ticketed.
But there's a, there's a first, I'm personally hearing that, I was told before that we have no ability to stop them from doing that, that's what I was told.
Yeah, that's what we were told.
Right, so it seems like we do, so this.
The whole issue downtown.
As long as we have an ability to stop that, because quite honestly, if I ran a food truck, I think it'd be a pretty good idea to come and sit outside this train station at night. Seems like a pretty good thing, there are 1,500 people walking up the train.
My god, are you gonna buy a food truck?
Yes.
Maybe I should.
Uh, so, but again, so to answer his question or his issue, we have that ability.
Yes.
So I think we can revisit this, but right now.
So what was this law supposed to do?
Well, the law was supposed to put into effect a way by which food trucks could be permitted in certain locations for a permitting process, because right now, you're just permitting, you know, ice cream trucks, which vendors, which are mobile, may stay at a spot, but they're there for a limited period of time. As opposed to a food truck that would typically is there for an extended period of time, and comes back on a periodic basis to a regular location, so if customers are aware of it, they'll be there during lunch hour for them.
An ice cream truck makes its little music and then stops for five minutes and moves.
But we can do that. What if we wanna allow a Walters hot dog truck to go to Amsterdam Field during soccer games and sell hot dogs? Can we allow them?
You can do that, because it's your property, you control that, the question is within the public right of way, that's different, because right now, you, you don't allow it.
So maybe what we need is a permitting process to allow for special events, and it doesn't have to be a town-sponsored special event.
Right.
It can be any sort of
A private private event.
Private, private
Commercial event, somebody wants to get a pizza truck at their house for a birthday party, use it on a cross.
Commercial purpose.
Yeah, just like it did
No, we would not that.
No, it's not commercial, it's it's private.
No, that's what I'm saying, make sure it's commercial.
It's like a battery crest or something, it's just getting to express the whole food truck, so.
So it's commercial drive it also.
Right, but so I think it needs to be much more lightweight then, I mean, this notion of like it can't be within two hundred feet of a restaurant, it can't be, I mean
And the intent there was, because there are some food trucks and some of these foundations that allow, but allow it if they come every Friday for X number of hours. And you wouldn't want that, because then it competes
But again, it can't happen now.
Hypothetical.
Right.
You respect that, we can't happen.
But this, right, but that restriction was in there because you were going to allow it with permits, so if you're going to allow by permit, you then have to say where it's not allowed.
But so we're striking that. Right, alright, so I think we don't, I think we need to revisit the legislation and and fine tune it for reflect its intent, which is
But to next point, if we are gonna say we'll allow it for private commercial purposes, we do have to have some sort of guidelines around when we're going to allow a permit, otherwise we have no, we can't control.
So you know what
But then it becomes arbitrary and perjudicial.
Yeah, the 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 other, to that end, well, sort of, how does the town ensure, any town municipality for that matter, ensure that that they are up to code in terms of the health requirements, so that that Jeremy doesn't just throw open a hot dog stand and will out his cart and
Jeremy's hot dogs.
Yeah, salty water, hot dog at Walgreens, yeah, but he's
Is that competing with problems?
He's doing toe for toe for years.
So we have a department that just require that they add the health department approval. That's right.
So we're gonna mandate, we we can mandate, obviously, that they have that.
And you just got the health department. Absolutely, yes.
It's Westchester.
Oh, Westchester, right, or something, Westchester would be mandated there.
Yes. Okay, I I have a sense of what you want.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next.
Um
Snow removal, huh?
Yeah, so snow removal for sidewalks in the parking district. Um, I I apologize, but I actually did not see this draft before it got into the packet. Um, and I Yeah, um
I'm not surprised.
Yeah, um, so ideally what we ought to do is this, so um what's in the packet now, but wasn't in the packet before, was a map that showed the the parking district, which is going to be our sidewalk. It's our downtown district, it's the the district that we are uh taxing, and it's the district that we are going to be responsible for removing snow, which is brand new from this winter. Um, there are also some peripheral areas that are outside of the district that we still wanted to make sure would be cleared for um you know, commuters walking down to the train, anybody who's walking in town, so if there were areas that had not been cleared, we would, since we passed our new legislation, we have the ability to ask our contractor to go out there and clear it, if it hasn't been cleared within a certain number of time. So the purpose of the legis, of the RFP was twofold. Number one, to clear snow within our parking district during every snow event. Second was give us the option of knowing what linear foot of snow removal is going to be for those uh properties in the outlawing areas that had not been cleared within the required period of time, so that people wouldn't have to be forced into the street to walk around. And so what I was hoping for, and I've already spoken to Drew, is that we would have uh ask the contractor for a lump sum payment for our November through April snow clearing.
Yep.
Um, and then our linear foot of removal in outside the parking district. And let's see how we do, and I was hoping to get this out by the end of September, so I'm, it will be back to you guys next Tuesday. Um, hopefully, yes.
Um, okay, sorry, couple questions.
Sure.
Can you remind me again why we want to contract this service as opposed to having town staff perform the snow clearing?
Because we have never done this before, but with town town staff, this is one of the rare occasions where we are not bound by prevailing wage. So it is, it it is theoretically possible for us to get a contractor that could do it at a better price.
Is it theoretically possible for us to do it?
Yes, once we do it, we can't take it away from ourselves. You cannot contract without union.
Right.
I get that.
So this is our opportunity.
I think we want to take that, yeah.
I think
Yes.
To just see how it, let's see how, let's let's issue the RFP, let's see how we do.
Yeah.
And then let's compare that against the estimates later. I mean, I will say during a really big snowstorm
Jerry can give us about how, what it would take.
The concern, I think, goes
And during a really big snowstorm, we're a little limited, you know, we have miles and miles of roads to plow ourselves, so
The person power.
If we can find someone cheaper who can do this area, that might make more sense.
Understood, I just don't want to take away public jobs from from
Probably just that, yeah, person power.
From folks if this is a public service and they're necessarily want to make a permanent service.
And we, and we can't, as as per our contract, we can't, so um
You know, I think when it snows really bad here, we're not taking anything away from those guys and gals, because they are working around the clock, so I'm sure they may be ecstatic to have someone
Oh, no, I hear ya, I hear ya.
And then
I got to run, let's go.
We'd have to pay prevailing wages, we should be, we should jump all over there.
No, it's fun.
Right, right.
I like this dog.
Right, 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 right.
Um, I also wanted to ask you about, um, so this is actually a a perfect example of a law for which um a local preference would be amazing, if we were able to do a local preference, although we don't have one, so I'm curious whether um it's possible to build in any sort of requirement um around the sort of location of the um of the the contractor, because obviously being here quickly
Yes, here is this
is close.
Yes.
For example, we don't want the from Kobo skill.
We don't want the from Kobo skill.
But why, if they can commit to be here at a certain time, why does it matter, as long as we get the cheapest price?
Well, I think there's a two piece to that.
As long as they committed to be here.
There's a two piece to that, I think to Ivy's point, if there is a local business, and I don't know if there is a, isn't in Newcastle that can do it, and whether they're one percent, two percent, or up to five percent more
Right, but the question is
we're giving the job to a local business. Number two, I think that's legitimate, number two, if um someone's an hour away and it's a snowstorm, for all we know, or even a half hour away, they may be prevented from getting here in a timely fashion.
It would obviously be cheaper to have your trucks and plows an hour away from here than it would be to keep them in place.
Right.
Right, so I just asked next, do we, do it, do, is that something that we can consider
Sure, but that's a local person.
For Newcastle purposes.
When we are issuing the contract, you know, when we're awarding it, or do we have to wait for someone to actually be in reach
Could be, could be a Newcastle thing, yeah.
Be hosting or it could be
Or
Before we know that, which seems silly, right?
Well, it's not good, it's not
Right, I think
No, I think you're right, when response time is a critical component.
Yeah.
Only, yes.
I think you can do that, you've got to come up with a reasonable radius then
Well, can you
that put in the uh requirement, so you have a business office within, or not a business office, but you have your physical stories of the materials
That you have to, yes.
and your labor force or something of that nature, within ten miles of your
You have in here already the ability to respond within an hour or something, but I'm just curious whether in addition to that
Yeah, but it
Right, you want time to
To to respond within an hour when there's no snow on the ground is
But I I think, I I understand what you're saying, I agree with that, and I think that giving business to a local business is definitely plausible, and we should do that if that's possible, but I don't think when we put out an RFP, we should necessarily limit ourselves to Newcastle.
No, 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 that's not what I said.
No, that's what I'm saying at all, no.
No, that's not what I said, um
Well, I thought that's what you said, giving it to a local business.
No, no, no. No, 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 no.
No, I'm I was suggesting that we put in a a radius, and and if we figure out a way of making some sort of um
No, that's okay.
Right, to create a responsive time.
Provision of law to ensure that the response time will be what we
Right, because they're gonna be
Can we just put in something like, you know, consideration will be given to the response time?
That's okay.
But it's a bid, which is a lowest responsible bidder, you say, well, it doesn't really give us that opportunity to pick and choose. Well, someone is uh
Yeah, I I'm just gonna
But it's a service contract, how, like performance
I thought we, I thought it was lowest responsible bidder, we had a reasonable, we had a reasonable expectation as to, or or explanation part of me as to why
There could be considerations. Yeah.
we can go with the lowest, we can go with someone who's closer, we can explain why
This is a particular, it's it's a service.
Well, about what the weather, it's weather related, so in other words, the weather here is gonna be different than New York City, and I just see there's weather maps and you could satellites, you could see what it's doing here, but there is something to be said that if you look out your window and it's snowing you know
This is considered public work, similarly, if you're awarding a contract, so you, for um paving project. Here, the difference that allows you to figure in someone's gonna be a response criteria, a response time. So
Right, okay.
Right.
But there's a way that we can make that a criteria, consider it in our determination of the winner of this response.
Yes.
Yeah, where I'm hesitating is that if um
I know, it's a good challenge, right?
I think what he's saying is, as long as they're in that radius, we have to then go with the lowest responsible bidder, as long as they abide by our quote, whatever
Right, and that's
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Right, if you say ten miles and someone is eight and someone is five, you gotta go with the lowest one, even if they're eight.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
No, I I get you.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll revise it to reflect that.
And the other thing that I wanted to ask about is that there's um language in there about the material, the the snow removal materials that can be used, and I just want to make sure that whatever gets put into here
Yes.
is um both environmentally friendly and something that is not going to corrode our new brick, or our bricklayers and all of that.
Yeah, so, right, so so what we put in here is um, and and the only thing is, is that I'm trying to figure out what's the better way for us to do it, whether or not we should take and provide the materials, so I make sure that they're using the right stuff. Or because I, we just took down the brick sidewalks and I don't want somebody, you know, substituting rock salt for, you know
I think, I think if it's not cross prohibitive, and it's the same apples to apples, we should do it, but at the same time, does that lock us in for anything else, because as you mentioned before, once we take it, we can't keep it away.
Yeah, but like where do they store these materials, would they then be driving to our DPW sites to pick them up, or they
I know, I know, and that's, so I'm waiting for Jerry and Bart's comments on this, because I'm just, we actually had a conversation about it today, and and I said to him, I'm just not
Good point, I agree that way.
I'm not positive how to, what's the better way for us to do this.
But if they didn't comply with that, then they're in breach of contracts, so then they're they're liable for damages if they've destroyed our sidewalks, and then they need to pay to fix them.
And we gotta rip up the sidewalk.
Well, you wouldn't be ripping them off.
Right, and then cause they have to establish that.
Yeah, it's such a
Yeah, it's a, and it may not be this year, it may be the five years down the road.
Slowly deteriorates and
The hard years, yeah.
We also think about pet friendly products, people walk their dogs on the surface.
Although
Yeah.
Although also, Jill, you know, we're going to have people with, you know, feet on the ground, boots on the ground, seeing what they're doing at some point.
Yeah.
So if they're in breach, I'd assume it'd be caught relatively quickly.
Right, but are we gonna know that that they're using a hundred percent magnesium chloride versus fifty percent, I don't know, I mean, I just
Not necessarily, I'm gonna see what they're using.
I love this industry.
Right.
But the thing for the dog, the the ones that are friendly for dog cause may be the same ones that are better for the sidewalk, and we will know that dogs have issues with their paws, because we'll be getting emails pretty quickly.
You're like your puppy, that's it. We do puppy patrol.
We'll be getting emails from people, wait a minute, I know one hundred percent
No, no, yeah, yeah.
But I I I I
Yeah, no, no, this is definitely
I think in addition, in addition to the dog paws, which is a good point, we should also um be thinking about what's an environmentally friendly product, and I I
Yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's probably the same, but I agree, that's probably the same.
I mean, I I would assume it would be the same, but
Yeah. Um, the other thing is, is funny, when we were going through stuff today, um, you know, Jerry actually put sand back in the budget as to something to use, just because, you know
Yeah, yeah, so that it's less than an inch and a half, okay?
Yeah.
Well, you see, and need to, and some of these hills that we have in this town, you know
That's what I was gonna do. Well, because on the bluestone, you have to use sand, you can't be using the other stuff, and it gets slippery, so we just
Oh, okay. I know that we use also on the big hills, what?
Yeah, yeah.
The con fish no, the con fish no, what is it called?
Right, so
No.
Alright, we're good on the next.
Con fishing friction.
There you go. It's remarkable the things we pick up. Anyway, so this will come back to you guys, okay? Alright, next, um, what do we have to do?
Swap for maintenance contract, impact.
Uh, yeah, it's just, it's just a renewal for the police department, uh, so
Authorization to rebit the playground basketball court.
To rebit the playground basketball court, we're ready.
Uh, any permit for the utilities?
Um, right, so um this is something that's come before the board before, and we've talked about it in terms of trying to get compliance from utilities, namely Con Ed, um, to take in in a timely manner, properly restore our streets for the street opening permits, so we'd like to be able to um to pursue this um
And so what 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 Pleasantville said was that they require a permitting process and an application fee, but that they don't require a performance bond associated with it, I think that's what I read in the packet.
Yeah.
Right, um
Oh, did we get scars now back?
Right, we're ready to go.
Christina?
No, I don't see, I'm in here.
We don't give street opening permits?
Yeah, so We do, but we don't require a bond with it, um
They don't require it.
They have, they do something similar to Pleasantville, they don't
Just wanna do a junky junk job and leave it for
Yeah, and then leave it, um, I'm sort of surprised, only because Pleasantville actually required Con Ed to come back and redo all their trenches when they did their um their gas work
Okay.
along what street is that? Was that the end of?
Washington.
Is is it Washington, was it the far end of Washington?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Con Ed did such a terrible job on the trenches, like they did on North Greeley. And um, possibly Jeff and Tom made them come back and redo it all, um
I think we require
I think we have to acquire it, we have to acquire it, because you're never gonna see a dollar from them after the fact.
Yeah, we know this, yeah.
And and to that end too, I just, you know, we discussed last time, and I understand we're busy schedule, but you know, I think we should revisit the double pole legislation.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, actually, uh
And let's get back on the agenda, staff.
Yeah, so um I spoke with Jerry about it today, um, so part part of our issue is, is that the gal that created the double pole on inventory, Maggie, um, left to take a permanent full-time job in the city. So we're actually down that that full-time staff member. There is something called INJINs, which is the Public Service Commission's uh inventory of double poles. The one that the utilities are required to uh enroll with, but there's no penalty if they're not removed in a timely manner.
What's it up to you?
And I asked Jerry today whether or not there's some way for us to take a look at the INJINs report and compare it to our double poles, and instead of us going out and spending days taking and inventorying and trying to figure out which double poles they haven't removed, let's just go on the INJINs list and see what double poles they reported, we already know what the answer is.
We, well, well, my, I think the suggestion of that was, you know, I've been asking for probably six months plus to get an update, and I'm not faulting anyone, people are busy, but it's not
No, 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 I I
And and um I I think that, while I have not made the ask, just calling them out and saying, what is your, what is your, whether they tell the truth or not, I assume they would be responsible and be honest. Where are you in terms of your double pole, here's our current list.
Yeah.
Give us your update, and let us, give us a a hard time, barring obviously there's emergencies that, you know, you know, we have some hurricanes bearing down right now, so their folks get called out, but you know this is what we've done up to date in the past year, and when are we gonna see another twenty percent clearance?
Yeah, this is actually Verizon we're calling out.
Either way, either way, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, no, it's It's a hundred percent Verizon, you can look at every double pole.
Right, whether it's Con Ed, Verizon, Altis, whatever it is, you're you're correct.
It's it's one and a half poles, Con Ed is off all the poles, it's Verizon's problem.
Right, so we just need them to be, and and Con Ed probably can pick the screws to some of these guys too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so we need to make sure that they're back on top of this.
Okay, I'll go, I'll put it back on.
And do we know anything more about North Greeley?
Um, so they came in and they filled in the trenches.
Right.
Um
But it's still bum 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 bum.
Right.
I got all excited, you were like, oh, they came and they did the work, and I was like, yes, and then I turned over, and I was like, no.
No, 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 all they did, no, no, all they did, all they did, all they did was fill in the trenches, and then there was drainage on the right side of the street as you're going towards the post office, and that's, that's ELQ's work.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, ELQ.
That
But that's only because we didn't uh
Huge. But we haven't finished, which is why I like them to move along and do the paving.
Try to roll back, roll back.
Okay, so when ELQ comes and does the final paving, North Greeley, all of North Greeley from where on on the sidewalk?
Yes, I know, yeah. I think it's from where we did the sidewalks all the way down.
Okay.
But it's not a drainage structure, it's just a gap, I don't know what we're talking, it's it's not a drainage structure.
No, 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 it's just, it's, no, it's from where they did the um the gas
So it's just a, it's a
Means, yeah, they 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 like
It's just a mess.
Yeah, thank you, that's, I don't know, yes.
Right.
I think it's a technical term for it.
I know it's a mess, but But what we are trying to do with some of the drain structures, we're trying to give them some uh
Yeah, no, that's not the issue, yeah, and the problem with North Greeley is, is that basically it's gonna be
Right.
very insignificantly milled down, but most of it is is, it has to be, the road has to be freestopped, so that's the issue with that. Okay. Oh, um, so uh Newcastle United for Youth um has a new independent uh contractor that they'd like to employ and
Has to go through us.
It is required to go through the same
We get reimbursed.
穿过 processes, yes, it's actually, all the fund funding is being through from their grant, none of it comes from us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, okay.
Chapact, we we actually bonded a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and we've never actually done anything with it.
Well, we we're actually about to install the screens, and we spent a little bit of that money.
Yeah, a little bit.
The tenth that screen gets installed, so that's pretty valuable, but yes, it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, so we desperately need to, I don't know if you guys have been there in a while, the steps
Uh, yeah.
need to be redone, and we keep redoing them, but the problem is that the infrastructure for the steps is so bad that whatever we do lasts like two weeks, and then it crumbles again.
Which is a problem that happens since day one. Yes.
Yes, so they really need to be redone, and actually, if we're gonna do that, we want to reorient them a little bit.
A bit.
And then do that, and the patio is obviously falling apart as well.
We love the fountain.
Did we try to get S G, did we try to get S G to
Do you
Move the fountain, would you?
And that's required, but
To 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 the work?
Yeah, but they're not required to do that.
No, right, they would do it, yes, I tried to get them, yeah, I called, tried to get them to work.
We did try to get them
Yeah. We can try to repair the fountain. Repair the fountain, it's an algae, it's an algae
Yeah, it's it's horrible.
I know what it looks like now, but like really, there's no options that allow us to, I I know what it looks like now, but there's no options that allow us to save that fountain, that fountain's beautiful.
It's all rusty. No, no, it's all rusty. It's It's really not.
You gotta reset the cement.
It's all rusted, I don't think it's so beautiful.
Well, why don't we go take a look, we can
And the thought was actually, if we're redoing the, if we really want a fountain, and we're redoing it, I have a drawing I can show you,
Do we have a bit when we're
We would actually make it smaller and move it up a little bit, no, wanna go out for a bit, so we're gonna
No, call it, it's
So what, so, okay, so and before before it goes out, we'll have the opportunity of a full-time board to understand what it is that we're cutting out the bit?
We can
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, 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 no, no.
Because I, I I think the fountain's lovely, I think there's a way that we can save the fountain, we can show it.
Well, can we be, can we be with or without preserving the fountain?
Sure.
Do you have a
Yeah.
What I was gonna suggest is that for some of these infrastructure changes, which you desperately need, uh, go to donors to to donate a fountain. So, uh, somebody will, uh, put it, maybe put their name on it, make it nice, I don't know whether ten thousand dollars works, five thousand dollars for the fountain, whatever it is. But you absolutely do need, uh, to change the walkways, the pathways and the stairs, it's very hard, uh, people that go to concerts sometimes are older, hard for them to to make it in and out.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this is not where we, I think we wanna chance, I think we would do it.
Well, no one said you.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
We should absolutely go outside the government funding operation, go to a contributive funding, uh, for some of this.
Well, we're, they're working, they're working, the friends group is working on that as well to raise money for infrastructure and do that as well.
Well, that, well, that.
Well, all of that being said, it's usually a higher-end donation than than a friends group would come up with, so that's what I'm saying.
Well, whatever, I think it's a good idea to try to get a donor for the fountain.
Friends group is a mechanism by which we can accept such an Asian.
Yes, but you get.
But I think it's a good idea to get some, by the way, the fountain doesn't actually have to be a working fountain either, but it it does look nice in the middle of that thing, something looks nice in there.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, you just have to figure out.
As long as it's recirculating water, you don't have to be.
Oh, sure, I am, we actually, we're gonna make it a little smaller, so eventually if you wanna put tables out there, do something for an event, it's not right smack in the middle.
You could have something that's like seasonal flowers.
Of the walkway, but, um, yeah.
I'm open to what, whatever.
As long as it drains, it doesn't have to be a working fountain which breaks often.
We could, we could ask, we could make that part of the RFP, if somebody, they can come up with some ideas, ideas.
Mm-hmm.
I caught that.
No R D Ns.
As long as we decorate, like seasonally decorate it and not become a swamp.
I caught that.
Definitely not a swamp.
And it doesn't work.
Um, and then there's an electronic sign on there as well.
To cover the, uh.
It's the electronic.
To cover the big green, uh, transformer box that they put right in front, yeah, it's lovely.
Yeah.
To put an electronic sign in front of it to block it and then it can show what events are coming up and we can use it for anything in town that we want to do.
And again, we tried to get them to move that, I recall, and they refused to move it.
You think that would look nice? Yeah. Really?
Lisa, is that correct? We tried to get them to move that and they refused to move it.
Yeah, it was Con Ed, they couldn't, they didn't, we tried. We can put in the RFP, we don't have to.
Well, it also be good to promote events.
We'll see what the design looks like, we don't have to do it for sure for all events.
I like the idea of some sort of screening for it, but I don't know that an electronic sign, it's such a lovely, like, sort of quaint and picturesque things, I don't know that a a electronic sign.
Yeah, something's blocking it. Yeah.
Well, it would, it would have been a foundation, I mean, it doesn't have to look like a, I mean, it's it's good to promote shows that are coming up for the traffic, that'd be good.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I mean, it's functional, you know, it has a.
We can make it look quaint, it doesn't have to look the way the one like right in front of the transportation looks like, no, I wouldn't want it to look like that.
But that's what I'm saying.
To put out, to put out, you know.
Right.
To 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 just put out a RFP and examine it, there's no harm, no foul.
Right. See what it would cost.
Just to see, yeah, and see the design, the cost, to be non-starter, make a good idea.
That's what it'll look like.
And do we have an understanding of all of the remaining kinda infrastructure upgrades and improvements we wanna make?
There is a function.
So, so when we talk about steps and patio and electronic sign, why those three are the three that we're putting into the bid as opposed to other?
Um. Yeah, but should be, there should be, there should be lighting as well.
Um.
Items.
It's junior lighting.
No, there's, well, yeah, these are safety rooms.
Yeah, the, um, the, other than the electronic sign, which is more a want, the, and just cause it's so ugly, the, uh, patio and the steps are real safety issues that need to be redone and the lighting.
And so the roofing and the HVAC, which I, if I recall correctly, were the issues that were originally bonded for, we've just paid for those upgrades out of fund balances and and operating? Or they haven't been done yet, or what?
The roof hasn't been done.
They haven't been done.
But there wasn't that, there was not a, we didn't.
It wasn't a real issue.
Oh, 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 I mean, it has to be done eventually, but it isn't, uh, has to be done just to.
We we didn't bond this for that.
But eventually, I have a whole list of, you know, there's, there are definitely kind of wants as opposed to needs, these are more needs other than the sign.
They're just. Yeah, okay. Mm-hmm.
And, um, you know, eventually want, it would be great to push up the roof, to push out the sides, to, you know, the wings, to push them out, but I can show you, but that's not something the town would pay for, that's something that's gonna be a fundraising, would be done that way.
It's worth it, push, push.
It's also, it's also when when these guys are trying to raise money and you're gonna have, like, there's a battle of bands coming up and, you know, when people come, I mean, not that it's gonna be done in time, but when people come, you want it to look nice so that, you know, people realize that it's, uh, this is gonna be something very special and I think the friends, you know, think that, you know, obviously making it safe is important for liability, but also making it, the outside look nice is gonna help us raise money to do some of the bigger things.
And they're hoping to raise a significant amount of money to do that work, that's not anticipated the town would pay for that.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, like I said before, I'd, I'd just like to understand why these three are the things that we're sort of elevating it using.
Cause they're really safety.
With the exception of electric stuff.
And and are are all three of these things eligible?
With the exception of the sign.
Paid for out of capital, so, I don't.
You're the capital.
No, we wanna see what we bonded for, but we wanna see what it would cost.
The steps of the patio.
Right.
Yeah.
We're not committing to doing anything other than the RFP.
Yeah, and and when we talk about wants and needs, just making sure that, you know, just cause something is on a need today, that, you know, it's gonna be a need
Mm-hmm.
Two years from now, three years from now, or four years from now, you know, like, maybe, maybe that is a need today because we may have not wanted to back out to bond again.
Right, absolutely, mm-hmm. Right, right.
But I I have to tell you that that, yeah, this, right, but the steps in the patio or something, you know, you're talking today about that.
Or it's.
Yeah, there are significant hazards.
I know, she's like, yes, yes.
But the steps in the patio are significant safety hazard now, so, and and we've been trying to repair it and we just, you can't repair it anymore.
There's already one lawsuit, there's already one lawsuit, cause there's steps. There's already one lawsuit, it's not against us, against some greenfield.
For the moment, yeah.
Oh, it's not discussed, the issue, but but yes, I think it needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
What's out there? It's not us.
All right.
Moving forward.
Okay, volunteer appreciation editor.
Yeah.
So, you know, I I act, want to just be an executive session, but it's not an executive session topic and, uh, right?
It is.
Well, is it, is it?
Well. I can move on to another topic if you wanna discuss why it's not executive session and not executive session, that would be good.
No, it's only, it's, it's.
Oh, oh. Yeah. Oh, that's interesting. You can't discuss in in public session why it's an executive session topic, it's why it's not an executive session topic.
Okay.
Well, you had discussions with Ed about this, right? Ed, Ed was.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
The edit offered the opinion that it was not, uh, executive session, I I think it can be executive session.
Ah, well, then let's hold that thought, let's let's table that, okay.
That's it, that's it, that's it.
But.
But doing an executive session.
So, um, I was contacted by, uh, Senator Harkman's office, um, for, uh, a proposal for the SAM grant and I would like some direction from the board as to what I should put in that letter. Um, I had an opportunity to speak to Ike today, um, about Millwood Rec Field and, uh, the lights. So Millwood Rec Field's an interesting, um, area because, um, there's a playground there, there's tennis courts there and there is significant site work that if we disturb the playground, we like change out the playground and put in a different playground, would, um, uh, trigger ADA site work requirements. Um, a significant portion of that site is granite, it's solid rock, which is why the, um, parking lot is like literally chiseled into there, you know, a little area and a lot of things in it. And so I am concerned that the site work is gonna be something that is gonna take a.
What ADA site work did we do here when we changed out as part of the plan for this project?
Oh, well, we're we're making it a little bit larger, we're doing some retaining rules, things like that, I I don't know what that's going to involve, but I believe it's gonna involve like jackhammers.
But we were doing that anyway.
We, yes, we were doing that anyway, and and, right, and the ADA compliance there was pretty easy to get because we had a a relatively flat, um, access area
So it's no, no harm, no foul.
um, adjacent to where there's a path that leads to the, um, train station.
So, but what, why is that question even relevant now?
No, 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 I'm, I'm sorry, I I'm going a little bit off kilter, but, so, um, I spoke to him about lights
Yeah.
and originally the light estimate that we got for the, um, the rec field was four hundred thousand dollars from Muscu. Um, he is confident that he can, uh, get an estimate from another company that has been traditionally half the price of Muscu, uh,
Indeed.
to, to take in and give us an estimate on that so that we can go forward, um, so, yes.
But Jill, at our last meeting, we kinda tasked the rec commission to come up with some ideas of their wants and what was, what they wanted to do, so
No, so.
I'd like to kinda hear from them as well.
You know, at our last meeting, we agreed to move forward with the Millwood Park proposal for the SAM grant, yes, we did.
We did.
I didn't.
Yeah, I think.
And I, and just to be clear, again, Senator Harkman's office did not reach out to ask us for a blank proposal about a SAM grant, they asked for
We.
the Millwood Park proposal.
And and I think if I recall.
If that wasn't clear from the email, I assure you it's been cleared in conversation.
Well, I spoke with Senator Harkman.
It might, it might be, it might be clear when Michael Weinberg, who who works for Senator Harkman's.
So given a lot to. It's elusive, uh.
No, no, I I spoke with Senator Harkman, actually, in my day.
And I spoke to his chief of staff.
Oh, my God, have you spoken to his chief of staff recently, within like the past, what, days?
Well, I, 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 I haven't, I haven't, I'm not, I don't, I have no, listen, I don't wanna talk about this, I don't wanna argue about this either.
Oh, my God, I don't wanna get into all the tech issues, I don't believe it.
I have not spoken to his chief of staff after that first conversation, when he was, when he was unaware of the, of the issue.
It's a shame I'm here on behalf of this money.
No, we're not saying we're not going after this money, this is not a political thing, we asked the rec commission, wait, 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 no, I wanna just finish talking.
So.
Can I just, I didn't say that it's a political thing, I can.
We asked the rec commission to just come up with what their wants are and what their master plan is, so I'd like to hear from them as to, as to what they want.
Not prior to approving that, that is not the direction that we gave at the end of the last meeting.
No, I, no, I don't, I've had specific conversations with multiple members of that committee, um, commission, pardon me, um, and they are all, all
Mm-hmm.
and I'd love to roll back that tape in support of using those monies in Millwood Park and if I recall, um, John said, um, they don't need a million dollars for Millwood Park, there are a lot of things, for example, Amsterdam, that eventually like to do.
Mm-hmm.
I actually spoke with, um, uh, I apologize, uh, the rec commissioner and I apologize, yes, thank you, yes, I apologize.
Matt, Matt Moore.
Um, and, um, you know, I mentioned him even, uh, a, um, a rec commission master plan, a rec master plan, and he said, uh, you know, we're not there yet. Um, we'll figure out what we wanna do, but all of them were in support of it, all of them were in support of it and I would, I would encourage to bring it back in and make that statement.
Right. What they said, if you recall though, they said, we, we, there's a lot more money than what this grant is giving us, that they need to spend in Millwood Park. So my point is, before we say we're spending it on lights, which are also more than what this grant is, maybe there's something else that we should be spending the money on, even if it's in Millwood Park.
Okay.
And I don't think we at this table are the ones to make that decision, I would like to hear, well, we are, but I'd like to hear from other people as to where that money can best be spent, even if it's in Millwood Park. You're saying lights, maybe that's not the appropriate place to use it.
No, it's funny, but I've spoken with with many of them, many of them, so I I'm telling you when that conversation was, so I don't know if you've spoken with them.
Okay. I have.
But I've spoken with many of them and in depth with the four who are here and they support that specific idea that was discussed, but I am open, I am more than happy to open, cause I don't wanna lose that money.
I don't wanna lose it either.
I, I, it's not ultimately our say, but I am certainly open, if they were to say, you know what, town board, I think, making it up, a hundred thousand dollars or making it again, two hundred fifty thousand dollars is best for the lights, we think that is the most important thing.
Right.
I am open to that concept and idea, um, but they were all in agreement for that particular project, meaning that particular park, Millwood Park.
That's fine, but they also said the fields need to be redone there, there's a lot of things that I don't know that I necessarily wanna just say it's lights.
So, in terms of drafting. Right, right, yeah, we, right, oh, oh, correct.
We need to talk to the rec commission is my point and find out what their views are, I'm all here for it, and they.
Wait, they were here, but I, but they were here and it was discussed, I had to discuss and they had to, they had to get back to us.
But I think we're, hey, we're talking about two different things, because I think that we absolutely need to put together a project plan that speaks to what are the individual elements within Millwood Park
Exactly.
that we have the funding and how we're going to fund each of those items with the rec commission, that's absolutely a next step that needs to happen.
With the rec commission. Yes, sir, that's.
But that level of specificity is not what is being requested in order to be able to release the grant funds from the state.
Right. So we may ultimately be on the same page here, if I think, yeah, I think, I think on the same page, right, right, whether, rather, a hundred percent, whether it's, whether it ultimately is the lights, whether it ultimately is the field and the tennis courts, whether it's the playground,
I think we are on the same page here, I mean, I think definitely to do it is it down with the rec commission.
whatever it may be, you're correct, they're going to be a big piece, if not a controlling voice of that, but to get out this, pardon the RFP, to get out the request for the grant, we need at least specify, and you can give me as much, we need, we at least need to specify, this is for Millwood Park for upgrades to these.
I actually recall, I'm also saying they potentially wanted to use some of it to do the inclusive playground over here, because that money was gonna be over, yeah, you can rewind the tape.
No. No, I, yes, a hundred percent, yeah.
Well, we have.
They did say that, um, so, I know you wanna use other monies for that, but I think they said they would be, that was number one, they said that is number one on their goals to get that done.
Oh, wow, I think we should play, I think, no, I think you should play that again.
Well.
So I think the link to do then, Jill, is to reach back out to Senator Harkman's office and ask them for what they're looking for, if we don't know.
I need to.
Yes, a hundred percent, let's play that again.
Oh, I, also, listen, what I was gonna say, I don't actually, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with anybody, all of, all of, my only point is that, I I said at the last meeting, I I understand that he's gonna wanna, he's gonna wanna have a project that he can say he may have, chipping into the inclusive playground is is, when satisfied, that I get that, I, you know, and I think the lights happen to be a good idea, my my only issue is that we're basically saying we want the money for this, for the lights, when we don't even know the cost.
Well, no one said the lights.
Did you know the?
Right.
But no one said the lights.
We don't, we don't know the, we don't know the, we don't know the cost, the point is, if it's gonna cost, if it's gonna cost four hundred thousand dollars.
And we don't know if that's what the rec commission wants.
Who said the lights?
Who said the lights?
Well, I thought we had to give specificity, we're just saying Millwood Park right now, I thought we were saying the lights, and my only thing is, I don't wanna say, we want a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant for the lights,
Jill said the lights.
I said the lights.
Jill said the lights.
Yeah. I thought it was a little.
if it costs two fifty, fantastic, but if it costs four hundred thousand or four fifty.
Right.
Then you're right where the playground is again.
Then we basically just, we're just agreed to spend twenty thousand of our own money for something that maybe we don't wanna spend.
Right, so. Right, so which is why, I I I, I'm sorry, I I will back up, cause clearly I digress.
Right. Correct.
Got it.
Um, is that four hundred thousand dollars was the estimate from Muscu, I believe that he had another vendor who would come in, would come in about fifty percent.
Right. And I wanna, I personally would wanna see that first.
I, I. And I wanna make sure that's where we wanna spend our money, as opposed to redoing the field, or redoing access.
And and. Okay.
Again, I don't think that level of specificity is what is required here, but if if there's a misunderstanding and we don't know what the Senate, the state senator is looking for, we should go.
Yeah, we have to ask, I can imagine, he wants to say, we just wanna use it in Millwood Park in general.
Or they're asking for it in Millwood Park. Or they're asking for it in Millwood, I'm asking, that's all they want to say, Millwood Park?
I am writing a formal letter from the town for the Millwood Park improvements that Senator Harkman is considering funding with the state aid to the municipal, Millwood Park.
I don't, we'll find it.
I thought they want something specific.
Millwood Park.
But I think we have to learn the specific improvements personally.
Yeah, we have to say them, but you can't just say it.
Right, I I understand it.
But it's a second venue.
But but did you, did you only when you, hmm, okay, sorry.
How could you name anything for that matter, you don't know what the cost is, right?
So that's what.
But that's my point, that's my point.
But we have to talk to the rec commission and see what their want, what is most important to them in Millwood Park.
You couldn't name anything.
But that. That's my, my point is we need to learn the cost.
I think, I I think, again, I'm not gonna, I think, I know, because I've spoken with them both here and outside of here multiple times. And I encourage you to rewind that video.
I don't need to, it's kind of condescending, I've heard it and I'm sitting here.
Okay, well, it's not condescending, because your information is incorrect, because they never said that they should use, we should use it two hundred fifty thousand dollars to build up second park.
You, you went off of that, I'm saying, if we say we want to use it for Millwood Park, do you know what you wanna use it for?
That's right.
because you may have an idea, but I'd like to hear from the rec commission as to where they think that money can best be spent, in Millwood Park, okay?
Right. Right.
Okay, we have to hear from them, so I don't know that lights is necessarily what they're gonna say is their number one priority.
It's not what the light. You're right, it's not what the light.
What we have, I'm sorry, what we have today is we have a proposal with cost estimates for improvements in a number of different categories, right?
It's, it's good ones.
Right, but keep in mind.
So, does that satisfy what they're looking for, can we ask that question, or do we have to be specific about which improvement it is that we would fund? With the two hundred fifty thousand dollars, I don't know, if we don't know the answer, we should just ask.
Um, so, so. Right, so, so when you fill out the same, they literally ask you for a budget with the the line items and the details.
They wanna know exactly why.
So, um, I'm going to get the, um, the light quote, the revised light quote from Ike tomorrow. Um, he told me that it would cost about ten thousand dollars to redo the field. Um, the SAM grant is only, it does not pay a hundred percent of the project, it can't be for more than seventy percent of the project, so, um.
So then we're committing to put in thirty percent.
Right, we're committing to put in thirty percent of it, um, he's also getting estimates for, um, resurfacing the tennis courts,
Mm-hmm.
which is what the rec commission had talked about and also possibly lights for the tennis courts. The reason why I mentioned the site work and the ADA compliance was that when we were talking today at the budget meeting, we talked about the fact that, um, the playground would be a natural thing for us to replace, but the problem with the playground is because there are ADA compliance issues with that hill leading up to it, that that site work alone may make that portion of the project cost probably there.
So how long does it take, because we don't wanna get hung up on on that piece.
Right.
And it may very well be that the rec commission picks A, B, and C and it works out fine, but maybe it doesn't work out fine to a cost.
Yeah, my understanding is actually that the playground is not in such rough shape, it's, um, it it was more of a.
So, so, so what would the site work?
But we have to, we do what the idea is.
Right, so I'm asking Ike to please reach out to to the rec commission and get from them what their top five things were.
And do we have to talk to neighbors before we're considering putting lights in?
I think we should probably let them know regardless.
Sure, they're, yeah, um. But we have. I mean, cause that is problematic to some, for some people, um, fox, one pheasant run in there, is that, it's, it's pheasant run.
Well, they, they should know, that's for sure.
But it it the advantage, if lights are something that's affordable, the advantage of lights, take it out loud, is that basically take away this rec field as being the sole place to.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I mean, I, I. No one the advantage to lights is, but somebody who are shining in their backyard may not think that's so advantageous.
Yeah, that's, that's, oh, I'm sorry, I said, sorry, that's why I just said.
The, the, the reason that Millwood Park makes a lot of sense, I don't know if you've been there or not, but the, the park is actually significantly lower than all of the.
Yeah.
Gosh, yes, since Millwood Park.
I think, I think you said that to me.
Oh, okay.
I agree.
Yes.
Then you would know that the park is actually lower than all of the, and the lights are shining down.
Yeah, so I think, I know your point, that's.
I know where it is, I also know that lights do not just shine down.
This is your point, to your point, I, I just, I, as I said, I, whether we have to or not, yes, we wanna let them, I wanna let them have it, you know, it's a game on.
And that's something we have to consider before, I don't know if we need, like zoning approval, I know certain people, I know it's ours, but
But I assume.
I know there's an issue with Mount Kisco Country Club now, because they're trying to get lights and bubbles, and it's a big problem, and they have to go in front of the zoning board. It's, it's a lot, it's an issue for people who live there. So I think it's something that has to be taken into consideration before we just decide we're putting up lights in somebody's backyard.
No doubt, because, a, a hundred percent, that's why, that's why we're not saying lights, we're saying many different things.
Well, I mean, look, I'm, I think lights would be fine, I just wanna know the cost first. But to Lisa's point, I mean, the truth is, and you could talk to some of the people in Chapel Crossing, for years they battled Chapel Crossing, they, that was, that was their biggest threat. And then meanwhile, they, you know, they had a, a, basically a turf soccer field built behind in their backyard with lights, and that's their biggest problem.
Yeah, and they're miserable.
You know, um, you know, but that's school property and they were able to do it, but if you talk to them now, what's their biggest, uh, sort of nuisance? It's, it's a turf field, it's a, it's a turf field, it's a turf field in their backyard with lights.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's you.
But I'm not saying it's not a good idea for Millwood, especially for the kids, playing in the lights, baseball for kids is, is a special, is special, we don't even know the field.
No, great, but it's.
To go, it is.
And for those who be.
You gotta talk, and I want to hear from the recommission as to what their, their priorities are.
That's a balance and a balance.
Use your softball programming rather than.
I don't think it's up to us to make that decision.
Right, and, and also we should consider putting basketball hoops on the, on the, I mean, listen, I always wanted to say we should use a true, what is it called, true of surface, what's that, uh, on true surface.
Sure, sure, larger.
But if we don't do that, I think we should also consider putting some hoops up in the ba, in the tennis courts. If there's gonna be pavement, you might as well throw some hoops up in there, although it could cost, right, tennis courts and basketball courts.
Well, should be, nobody wants to play on tennis courts like that.
I understand, but if you're gonna have cement, at least you should have basketball courts.
Well, the, that's, that's what it's gonna be, it's gonna be asphalt, um, also, you know, if we're gonna have, I don't think there's any lights in, in the Millwood, um, parking lot.
That's your point.
What?
I love it, I love it.
This doesn't really fight.
Parking lot, probably because there've been no lights on the field, so there really wasn't a difference.
It's a horrible parking lot.
The parking lot's ruined.
It doesn't change it.
There's nothing, no, I know.
Right, exactly, that's, that's a, he's.
Do you like to park in the Chico's at night, they close at eight thirty?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have better sidewalks and better access.
About the Chico's.
Exactly, you can come on the side, you can.
So that, absolutely, absolutely, no, 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 it's a good idea.
Okay.
No, yeah, I mean, I think lots of.
All right, great, so I reached out to Ike and asked for things, okay.
And let's reach out to the recommission.
I'd ask Ike to reach out to the recommission for the top five.
They have a meeting, I think, tomorrow night, I think.
Top five, yeah, okay, and that way he has it in on paper and, yeah.
Just in case you wanna go.
When, when is, I've got a couple, when is, when is our, when is our deadline, do, do we have a deadline for that? Because I'm assuming it has to be by the end of the year, because he's gotta give his proposal by the end of the year.
No, they, they didn't, um, he didn't give me one, and I didn't, I, I can call him tomorrow.
I mean, we should do a proposal, and, yeah, we don't wanna risk.
A hundred percent, no, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm hoping to do it by the end of the week, but, that's, uh.
I see, we know, we spoke to my, we spoke, saw my, my man.
It's a letter, we have, we have to get numbers, don't you? Because if we're committing to thirty percent, if Ike's wrong and, and lights are gonna cost four hundred thousand dollars, we may decide we don't wanna spend the thirty percent of that, so we need to understand what that is.
Mm-hmm.
Before we can put it in a letter saying this is what we wanna do.
Okay, so, but, right, so we get an estimate, but depending upon how long it takes us to take and actually put it in, then maybe a difference between the price that you get and the, and what happens when you say.
Did Senator Murphy and, 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 uh, someone Buckwald, wasn't it pretty basic, like basketball court, playground?
No, well, Murphy's always gave.
I mean, you didn't set out every single detail, no, for your line item cost prior to applying.
Right, right, it was basketball court, playground.
Can, can I, I never showed you the, 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 the grant text?
No, I, I understood, but, but it wasn't, it wasn't, we didn't break out each, each thing, did we?
Yeah, there's a, um, there's a budget, they, they ask you for each thing, I mean, they don't really care how much it costs, as long as, as, as long as
And you used, you asked me when you were spending it.
your estimate for the project, um, is seventy percent of the total budget cost, because that's all they're covering. So, you know, it can't be, you, you have to prove that the property is yours that you're making the improvement on. You have to, um, establish what the budget is and that the grant is only covering seventy percent. If it's covering a hundred percent, they're gonna cut you back on it.
And my, my.
So, if, if it goes.
You have to say what you're doing.
My, no, but I know that, my conversations with, with someone Buckwald and, and his staff, at no point did he wanna know, at least in that initial conversation and getting the ball moving forward, um, this, this, this is for the equipment, this is for retaining the wall, I mean, it's also, the project has changed multiple times, but with a reason, it's, it's changed, you know, you know, we've never lost the money, in fact,
No, but you didn't say we wanna do something downtown.
we, this, this Senator Murphy's money.
We didn't say we wanna do the basketball court.
No, but I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm.
There's a proposal and it's already, you know, and the line, and the cost associated with it, so.
Want to understand.
All right, well, I, I'm confident, Senator Harkins.
Maybe you decided that, but nobody else did, and certainly the recommission didn't, we haven't heard from that.
Well, it's what we discussed in our workshop last Sunday, right?
We, we were just.
And I do remember, thank you, and they were gonna get back to us with what their priorities were. They also said we could spend millions of dollars in Millwood Park and it'll never be enough. So.
They did not say we would spend millions of dollars in Millwood Park, in fact, they said they did not think that we had a million dollars worth of renovations to make in Millwood Park.
Yes, they did.
Yes, that's what John Ray said, correct. All right.
Okay, um, shall we move on to our town board meeting? Or do you wanna break for our executive session, or will we put it at the end?
Look, what executive session, for the, oh, for the faculty presentation.
Let's do, for the, for the.
Why don't, since there are people here, why don't we do the, the end?
We'll just table it, we'll just do it the next one, whatever.
Okay.
Well, we can just do it the next one.
Yep.
We're not gonna break the session. Shall we move into adjourned?
Yeah, no, yeah, we're, we're.
We're just gonna. Just gonna right into the meeting.
Don't you have to adjourn it?
Do, are there people in, um, did we, had CCFC in there?
Adjourn the session.
At some, the ARB.
Oh, okay, so we stay here, okay, good, great, good.
Right here.
So we should adjourn the, um, work session.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Well, favor.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, welcome everybody to the Newcastle Town Board Meeting of Wednesday, September fourth, two thousand and eighteen, starting with some announcements. Christine, I'm not gonna do my supervisor's, don't you worry. She sent me an email today, now, you're gonna not do it at the same time tonight? I get the hints, I mean, you know.
It's fine, okay, I know you're saying, you can skip.
Some of these things go right off my head, but that one didn't, that one I got, loud and clear.
You can all, you can.
Okay, nine eleven ceremony, why did you send that on here?
I'll make it now, because.
I'm surprised it took this long to send that, by the way. Nine eleven ceremony, and it's gonna take place on September eleventh, uh, which is a Wednesday, next Wednesday, as a matter of fact, six thirty at Gedney. Uh, Community Day, Saturday, September fourteenth, ten to three at the train station. Battle of the Bands, Friends of Chapac, Estrela Kikoa Battle of the Bands, which some of the more, most talented, fun local bands. On September twenty first at six P M, there's a cocktail hour before, and/or you just come for the concert. Uh, film screaming, uh, screening, Paris to Pittsburgh, Wednesday, September twenty fifth. And that's at the Chapac Performing Arts Center, also known as Chapac. And that's basically, uh, let's see, uh, From Coastal Cities to America's Heartland, Paris to Pittsburgh, celebrates how Americans are demanding and developing real solutions in the face of climate change. Um, and as the weather grows more deadly and destructive, they aren't waiting on Washington to act, that's what that movie is about.
And also tomorrow night, for the little ones, there is James Patterson is signing his new children's book, uh, at, at the Performing Arts Center, so bring your little kids.
Okay, that's it, so if I was reported, it'd be in the, uh, it'd be in, it'd be in the email press.
You can, you go ahead.
School of Safety, working on the S R O with the school, uh, the consulting team is moving down to Arizona, we're moving ahead with the, uh, a draft, uh, a draft of the Form Based Zoning Code, infrastructure streetscape update that's on the website. And, uh, let's see, uh, new carpet at the community center.
Yeah, woo woo.
Is it gonna be shag?
We, we bet the basketball court playground, because we don't talk enough about, uh, playgrounds here. And, uh, Chapel Crossing, one seventeen, roadwork is completed, will maybe some additional striping, looks great, and, uh, that's pretty much it.
You know, your, um, reference to shag carpeting reminded me, um, of the fact that, uh, tomorrow is the first day for the teen scene
Oh, yeah.
at the, uh, at the community center, um, which is for, uh, middle school age kids.
It should have been, yeah, yeah.
Um, and it actually is a program that we developed and launched as a result of two Girl Scouts who did their, um, Silver Award on, uh, creating a teen center. So, just wanna congratulate, uh, Ava and Michelle for their hard work, which is like.
So, Thursday, Thursday, Friday?
Is it, yeah, Thursday or Friday?
It's, oh, I'm sorry, no, it's Friday.
Yeah, I thought it was Friday, yeah, yeah, sorry, okay.
Yeah, yep.
It'd be in the newsletter?
Yes.
We can actually make that the top story this week, because we have nothing else really, uh, this weekend, not that, uh.
It's really great.
Pretty good story in itself.
It's not like Community Day, where we have to put that as the title. John, you having a blood drive also, so you mentioned something about that?
We are, we are, we are, and, uh.
I didn't even realize you were holding this sign when I said that, that's very good.
Well, that's, that's what we do. We are indeed having a, a blood drive, and we're having a wonderful Community Day. One of the things that I would like to do is to, uh, encourage folks to have booths, and to, it's the best way in the world to get the word out of what, uh, what folks, folks are doing, uh, it's, it's, it's very, very, very nice. One of the things that I would like to all to do, in view of the issues that we see around the world, um, uh, blood donation is, is really important, now more than ever. Uh, what I would like to see, if we, if we can, um, if the town board members could set an example for the community. Uh, if you can donate, that would be great, we'll make, we'll get some, we'll get some great pictures.
We did.
The gap is relative to.
We, it, it.
When was the last, when was, uh, the, uh?
Yeah, when was Senator Harkins' blood drive, was, has it bounced since we've?
Last, oh, yeah, yeah. We wish the, well, the last official all-town blood drive was.
Better know.
John, I am not allowed to give blood, but I will make my husband do it.
No, no, but you get somebody, somebody to give it yourself. The point, the point, the point is that we're gonna, the need is gonna be pressing, and, uh, I'd like to see whatever else we can, you know, we can do, uh, in view of this horrible weather that's, that's affecting this country and the bombs and, and, and other nations as well. But I, I, so I really wanted to get that, uh, that out. Any town agency, hopefully, if you would like to describe what you do, within a booth, it's a great opportunity to do that. Uh, and we just like to make it a great event, we can control everything but the weather, so I hope that folks, uh, operate, thank you.
They did it last time they went, yeah, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be fantastic.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, I know what Harper's blood drive was, actually, the low number, or you said fourteen percent?
Wasn't that long ago.
It wasn't a long, it's a good data.
No, I said we have like fourteen tables, just the town of Newcastle, we, we already presence there, it certainly will be this year.
Oh, oh, we, we are, we're.
With the biggest clients.
Are we, are we gonna do the, uh?
Chime.
All right.
They're trying.
Or, you know.
It's like a key score.
All right, wait, wait, I have, wait, I, I, I had, uh, an announcement, um, please join us for a remembrance service for Carolyn Marcus on Friday, um, this Friday, the sixth, from one to three at the Newcastle Community Center. Carolyn was a supporter at the Newcastle Senior Center, where she touched countless individuals with her calm and compassionate demeanor. Um, she brought love and light to all she knew, light refreshments will be served, and they'd like you to RSVP at two, three, eight, eighty-eight, eighty-eight. Uh, Carolyn was a wonderful person, and we're so glad that she, uh, was with us even for the short time she was. Um, just a couple real quick things, the tax bills have been mailed, the, uh, first half taxes are due with that penalty. Uh, Monday, September thirtieth, um, regulatory town hall hours have resumed. Um, new website, um, gonna be launched, like, as of Community Day, staff has been getting trained on it, and it's fabulous.
Good.
Very excited about it, it's, um, yeah, a real step above, so we're, we're doing great. And, uh, the brand new screen at Chapac is being installed on, uh, Tuesday, uh, the tenth of September. It's gonna take them a couple days, they have to do some additional rigging, and we're really excited, and we thank our anonymous donor for, uh, the purchase of the screen that we're finally able to get installed. So, thank you so much for that, okay?
So Senator Harkins' blood drive was July twenty ninth, what is it, six weeks, is that the time?
That's, it was exactly six weeks, right.
That's perfect, wow, look at that.
It's, it's technically fifty-eight days, but the reality is, depending on the cost of the, the, you donated, uh, that you, that July, what?
Twenty nine ninth. Thirty, thirty-one days, thirty-four days, thirty-one days in all of these, plus, what is it, September?
Fourteen, it's forty-five, it's not, it's just short, it's short of fifty-eight, but.
Eight weeks.
It was a tough day, it's like a Friday or something, or even, something like that.
I was away July twenty ninth, so I get my blood. No, you get my blood, I was away July twenty ninth.
I gave platelets, just saying.
I'll, I'll, that's a long process.
I don't know, I don't know if that any face of the process.
I gave platelets.
I'm sure you did, I'm sure, and you're the best platelet.
I swear, I gave, they gave the best ever.
Ever.
Rob is reversed immediately, then actually, platelets. Pretty cool.
Twice, in two days.
Twice, okay, so that's that, we move on, now we have our, uh, let's see, what we got, yeah, public hearing? Uh, nothing, public comment, we had our public comment, right, that's it, any other public comment? Okay, resolutions.
I move to approve the payment plans in the amount of six hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-five cents listed on the summary pre-check writing report in detail, voucher detailed report is to prepare on September fourth, twenty nineteen, checks to be issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Thursday, September fifth, twenty nineteen. Second.
Well, favor.
Hi.
Hi. So on this next one, I, I can read this, some cash bond agreement, uh, as discussed at the work session and the prior work session, um, whereas on October sixteen, twenty eighteen, in connection with S G Chapac LLC submission of the D O T permit, uh, to perform certain work, S G provided the town with a six hundred thousand dollar cash bond and entered into an agreement concerning the bond. Whereas paragraph six requires a certain improvements to the Soul River Parkway completed by August thirty-third, twenty nineteen. And whereas by later dated August eighth, twenty nineteen, S G has advised that due to delays in processing the work permit application by D N T and the New York State Department of Department of Protection that is taking longer to obtain approval, we propose improvements than anticipated, and the improvements will not be completed by August thirty-first, as required by the agreement. Therefore, is hereby resolved that paragraph six of the agreement is amended to read as follows.[1588.41] Owner agrees that the building permit for the East Village will not be issued until D O T issues the Soul River Parkway permit and work commences on such improvements. And that the certificates of occupancy for the Chapac Crossing East Village, and that the work will be issued prior to the completion, will be completed prior to issuance of the C O for the East Village project or August thirty first, twenty twenty, whichever occurs first. So we're saying that, right, the, the building permits won't issue until the D O T permit is issued and the work commences. If those two conditions occur, building permit gets issued, however, the work has to be completed by August thirty first, twenty twenty, or the issuance of a C O for that project, whichever were to occur first. Is that, and that's it?
So move.
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
Well, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Great, so who first?
Hi, me.
Hi, me. No, I'll write this up. Alright, Senator.
Okay, so then whereas on December thirteen, twenty eighteen, the town board adopted a resolution adopting a secret negative declaration approving, uh, S G Chapac LLC's request to modify condition number eighty four of table one of Fifth Amendment to the finding statement dated November ninth, twenty sixteen, in Chapac Crossing Retail Project. Um, and condition sixteen required applicant to use its best efforts to relocate the, the Westchester County Beeline Bus to a location, uh, bus stop to a location within Chapac Crossing site. Uh, whereas the applicant advises has met with Westchester County, has direct communications with the county executive and the deputy county executive regarding this request, as well as with Andrew Ziegler, program administrator for bus operations for Westchester County. And the county advises the bus stop will not be relocated for Chapac Crossing at this time due to cost liability and lost route time. Now therefore be resolved, the town board finds the applicant has satisfied condition sixteen by using its best efforts to relocate the Beeline Bus Stop to a location within the Chapac Crossing site, but the operator of the bus line, Westchester County, is not willing to do so at this time. And this condition therefore be deemed satisfied. Be further resolved, a copy of this resolution be transmitted by the town clerk to the planning board and the applicant.
Well, favor.
Alright.
I, I would also add that certain town, uh, board members tried, and they were all unsuccessful, we just leave it to them.
Yep. But we will continue to try.
And that the town board members will be here next year.
Yes, we will. I need you to try. Okay, so four, we're gonna table?
Yep. Yep.
Alright, uh, five. I move to approve an independent contracting service agreement with the Student Assistance Services Corporation, six hundred White Plains Road, Tarrytown, New York, in support of Newcastle United Youth Community Coalition for a fee not to exceed thirty six thousand, one hundred eighty two dollars per period, period of August fifth, two thousand and nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Well, favor.
Alright.
Hi.
Alright, um, I move to approve, uh, well, I'm just, hold on, pardon me. Battle of the Bands, right?
Yeah, it's a refund.
Okay, I move to approve a refund of two hundred fifty dollars which is received from Friends of Chapac Performing Arts Center for a banner which is approved by resolution on July sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen for the Battle of the Bands concert to be held on Saturday, Sep- September twenty first, two thousand and nineteen at eight P M.
Second.
Well, favor.
Alright.
Hi.
That's still happening, they just.
Just the banner.
Not do the banner.
Yeah.
Right, 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 right.
Uh, I move to approve, uh, a request for a banner from the Horace Greeley Scholarship Fund for the Sign Up For The Spelling Bee to be held Monday, November fourth, two thousand and nineteen at eight P M, space permitting, banner to be displayed from September thirtieth of this grand year to October fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Well, favor.
Uh, I move to approve a request for a banner from the Horace Greeley Scholarship Fund for the Sign Up For The Spelling Bee to be held
Hi.
Monday, November fourth, two thousand and nineteen at eight P M, is that the same thing I'm reading twice?
One is signing up, and one is.
Okay.
Well, it's supposed to be Come To The Spelling Bee.
Yeah, yeah, the first one, which was.
I think the second one, second one, too, it's like.
I mean, that is. Hi, the second one is Come To, Come To The Spelling Bee?
Yes.
Alright.
Wait, wait, no.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, you're in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, go ahead.
Alright, to be held Monday, November fourth, two thousand and nineteen at eight P M, space permitting, banner to be displayed from October twenty first to November fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Well, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Skipping this.
We're not doing, I, we're working through that, alright, go ahead, I.
Uh, I move to authorize renewing the annual contract with Mid Computer Services Inc. of Lake Mary, Florida for annual software maintenance for the Impact Records Management System in the amount of thirty two thousand and sixty six dollars.
Second.
Well, favor. Hi. Hi.
I move to authorize the rebidding of the playground basketball court at two hundred South Greeley Avenue.
Second.
Well, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I move to authorize, um, now therefore be resolved. The town board and the town of Newcastle authorizes the town attorney to initiate legal proceedings against Con Edison to recover certain costs. What is this?
King Street sidewalk.
The King Street sidewalk, okay.
We talked about lesson, right, where they're supposed to play, uh.
Alright.
Sizable amount and then.
What the, the dispute, the dispute.
I grabbed.
So, um, I move to authorize the town attorney to initiate legal proceedings against Con Ed to recover certain costs of the, uh,
What is it, the, yeah.
that Con Ed agreed to pay regarding the restoration of the sidewalks.
Second.
Well, favors.
Hi.
Hi.
I move to authorize to approve additional positions and pay rates in the recreation department effective September fifth, twenty nineteen, as listed in the attached resolution.
Second.
Well, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Anything else? No, just to let you know that I, um, uh, emailed Ike, and he responded that, I asked him, um, can you please ask the recommission to put a top five improvements to the field. And I put I E lights, you know, field improvements, tennis court, et cetera, et cetera. And he wrote, Millwood Park improvements is actually on the agenda for tomorrow night's meeting, hopefully I'll have an answer to you on Friday.
Did, we didn't need a resolution for the, uh, to prepare the R P, right, for the, uh, Performing Arts Center?
The performing arts.
Oh, that's right.
You should do that.
You do, not report, but you do it, I guess.
Okay, so maybe we should just do a little.
Just to repair it, what we do is repair your.
Yeah, it was teaching.
Show the R P, whether you do the R P.
Yeah, repairing it, yeah.
So you need a resolution to repair the R P for.
You don't need to for the issues, I mean.
Yeah, we should do just.
You just.
You don't need it at this point, yeah.
Right, so we don't need a resolution.
Just to get it now.
That is. Okey dokeys.
Okay, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Well, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Are we staying for that executive?